On called order, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our own.
May we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. McIrvin?
Here.
Ms. Witchy?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thanks, Jason. First item on the agenda is a proclamation.
Proclamation, Arbor Day, Earth Day. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees called Arbor Day, which is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas the city of Renton has been recognized as a Tree City USA since 2008 by the Arbor Day Foundation, and whereas trees reduce soil erosion, produce life-giving oxygen, increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business districts, improve wildlife and fish habitats, and contribute many other benefits. And whereas in 1970, Senator Gaylord Nelson introduced legislation designating a day in April as a national day to celebrate the earth and called it Earth Day. And whereas volunteers from neighborhoods, schools, businesses, and service clubs will help the city of Renton celebrate Arbor Day and Earth Day on Saturday, April 28th, by planting trees and shrubs at Tiffany Park to restore and beautify the urban forest. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim April 28th, 2018, to be Arbor Day, Earth Day in the city of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance and witness whereof. I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed this 23rd day of April 2018. Signed, Dennis Law, Mayor of the city of Renton.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
May I move the proclamation to be adopted as read?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. It's our pleasure to present this proclamation to Terry Flatley, who's the urban forestry specialist for this city, and he knows everything about our trees. Terry?
Do you mind if I say a few words?
No, please.
We've got a few. Again, Terry Flatley, Urban Forestry and Natural Resources Manager, working with the Community Service Department's Urban Forestry Program. And tonight, I'm wearing two hats, as the Urban Forestry and Natural Resources Manager and as a member of the Washington Community Forestry Council. The council advises the Department of Natural Resources and Commissioner of Public Lands on urban forestry issues throughout the state. It takes a village, really does. The Urban Forestry Program, which is housed in the Community Services Department, is recognized as one of the outstanding cities in Washington State for its program. Today's program is the result of support from the community, city council, city departments and employees, working together to implement the 2009 Urban and Community Forestry Development Plan. Since the plan was approved by city council in 2009, staff has worked hard at its implementation. As of tonight, of the 25 strategies shown in the plan, 52% of them have been completed, and 60% of the 106 action items have been completed. In addition of the four major goals of the plan, the city has created a functioning and exemplary urban forest. Other cities come to Renton for advice on their programs, and state staff point to Renton's program as exemplary in some of their publications and announcements. The city has increased public awareness, awareness of the value and benefits of the urban forest and the program. The city has partially met the goal of managing the urban forest at optimum levels for canopy, health, and diversity. We have a little ways to go there, but we're making an inroad. And we've partially met the goal of drafting and adopting legislation that supports the Urban Forestry Program. A few Urban Forestry Program actions that have been accomplished include the annual Tree City USA certification over the past 10 years, including the Arbor Day, Earth Day celebration on the last Saturday in April for the past 12 years, with the assistance of over 2,000 volunteers planting over 5,100 trees, shrubs, and ground covers in our parks and along streets. This is our eighth Tree City USA Growth Award. Land use planning coordination with the Community and Economic Development Department regarding tree regulations for new and existing developments, and sharing in the cost of consulting a certified Arborist inspector. Part of the benefit of this interdepartmental coordination has resulted in the protection and saving of thousands of mature trees and new and existing developments, such as with the Landmark Tree designation. Replacement tree planting projects, establishment of the Fee and Lou Tree Bank Fund, and grants awarded for site restoration at May Creek Trail, pruning of 350 street trees at the Landing, planting 70 street trees in North Renton, and a 2011 canopy cover assessment grant have all been completed. In addition, more than 7,500 public and private tree inspections have occurred over the past 10 years. Some of the things to come, we are hoping to accomplish some of the following in the next 10 years. Updating the Urban and Community Forestry Development Plan implementation schedule is one. Funding for a city-staffed arborist crew for regular maintenance of street, park, natural area, trail, and facility trees found on publicly held properties. Creation of a Renton Champion Tree listing, improved street tree regulations, and a citywide tree inventory update. And while I have the floor, I want to mention some of the projects that are coming in 2018. This will be the final year of the knotweed control project along the Cedar River with our partner Forterra Northwest under a King Conservation District grant. We're about to complete the Honey Creek Ridge HOA Street Tree and Sidewalk Project, Phase Two. We have a citywide number-one priority tree maintenance contracts with three different contractors. We have a high-risk tree-on-call agreements with three tree service companies that can respond instantly when we have tree emergencies. Tree and pathway repair project along the Springbrook Trail and Ripley Lane Trail that's scheduled to begin before too long. And towards the end of the year, the Southeast 168th Street and Sidewalk Project. This coming Saturday, April 28th, at Tiffany Park, 1902 Lake Youngs Way Southeast, starting with registration at 9:00 AM is Renton's 12th Arbor Day, Earth Day celebration. And as I mentioned, it takes a village, so we have a lot of people here in the audience that come out and support that effort. We have some great sponsors this year that have donated Arbor Day, Earth Day t-shirts, food and drink for volunteers, and a portion of the trees to be planted. And this includes Integrity Networks, David Resource Group, and the Washington State Urban and Community Forestry Program. In conclusion, on behalf of the Washington Community Forestry Council, my other hat, and the Arbor Day Foundation, I would like to congratulate the community and the city of Renton organization for supporting the Urban Forestry Program for its 10th Tree City USA Award. And I also have a plaque I'd like to present to the council for our 10th Tree City USA Award.
In fact, Ed Prince can come up and reach you up there. You guys have to face, yeah, there you go.
Way to go, Renton, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Terry. And thank you, putting back on your city hat. Thank you for all the great work you've done all these years.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to the next item. We have a special event. It's going to be a special proclamation from Ed Prince in a minute. For most of you certainly in the room know that Jay Covington's been sitting in that seat down there for quite some time, and he's decided to retire after 28 years of serving this city to become a potato farmer, if you can believe that. And we have a special proclamation, Ed has a special proclamation. We have some special guests here tonight that came back that Jay has worked with over the years, I just wanted to recognize them. We have former Mayor Kathy Coker is in the audience, Councilwoman Toni Nelson, Councilmember Rich Swicker, and Councilmember Mercy Palmer. So, Clay, if you get a chance, you guys wave, we've got the camera on you. Be great to see you. Thank you for coming this evening. So, Council President Prince.
Yes, I will do my best to do this as well as Jason. Whereas Jay has served the city of Renton for over 28 years, including more than 1,100 city council meetings, the first of which was on his birthday in 1990, and whereas Jay worked tirelessly to herd the cats and helped create the city's first business plan and every update since, and whereas while golfing, instead of counting strokes, Jay handicaps his golf game by counting the number of golf balls he finds versus the number of golf balls he loses in a round, and whereas Jay considers golfing to be a very good time with friends, and with Swicker, and whereas many Monday evenings, Jay left City Hall to rescue Bob Edwards from his broken-down Jeep Wagoneer to bring him to his council meetings, and whereas no matter what the time, Jay was almost always the last one to turn off the lights at City Hall, and whereas Jay has supplied staff and council with a portion of his first potato harvest every year with instructions to leave the dried mud intact until ready to use, and whereas Jay was always the first one to show up at the city's Arbor Day celebration every year, dig the biggest hole, and then proceed to show everyone how to plant the trees, and whereas the quiet in the office will seem more pronounced without the sound of Jay's run-stomp as he races to his next meeting, and whereas Jay was one of the leaders in getting communities of schools and the Renton Community Foundation started in Renton, and whereas Jay was part of the team that worked diligently to bring IKEA and the Lanning to our city, and whereas the words most often used to describe Jay are outstanding speaker, NMC, a real people person, good listener, and problem solver, and whereas Jay has never been one to take credit but is always willing to take the blame, and whereas Jay is always quick to smile and enjoy a good laugh, and the word no is not in Jay's vocabulary when someone needs help and support. Now therefore, we, the Renton City Council, do hereby proclaim April 23rd, 2018, to be Jay Covington Day in the city of Renton, and we encourage all citizens to join us in this special observance. And witness whereof, we have herein to set our hands and cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed this 23rd day of April 2018. Signed, Ed Prince, Council President, City of Renton, Washington; Don Person, Council President, Pro Tem, City of Renton, Washington; Randy Corman, Councilmember, City of Renton, Washington; Armando Pavoni, Councilmember, City of Renton, Washington; Ruth Perez, Councilmember, City of Renton, Washington; Ryan McIrvin, Councilmember, City of Renton, Washington; and Carol Ann Witchy, Councilmember, City of Renton, Washington.
Nice job. Mr. Covington, would you like to say a few words?
(laughter). Terry, can I borrow your notes?
Jason, would you set the timer, please?
(laughter). Well, thank you for that proclamation, which brought back some pretty great memories. I'd forgotten about the midnight run to rescue Bob Edwards. That's a...[796.13][796.13](laughter). I have, the city manager profession is one that you typically don't get to spend a lot of time in any given city. Usually, the nature of our jobs are, on behalf of the mayor and the council, we tell some people yes, and some people we have to say no. We can't allow you to do that. And so, over the course of usually between four and five years, at some point, you've told everybody in the city no at least once. And oftentimes, that results in council and mayors saying, maybe we need to find somebody different, or the public demanding it. I've been blessed, this city has been so fantastic. 28 years here, I can't tell you what a pleasure it's been. I have wonderful memories. I think, Alex and I were just talking, gratefully, sometimes the less-than-wonderful memories tend to fade, so the ones I remember are the great ones. I've had great elected officials to work for this whole, my whole time here, four great mayors, all of the council members that I've worked with, all dedicated. I think the citizens of Renton need to know the hours that these elected officials put in, and it is absolutely public service. They don't do it for anything other than they really do truly want to make this a better community for you all, and it's a blessing. I also want to just take the time to thank staff for, you have the best staff of any city. The mayor, law, and I, over the last 10 years, have worked hard to make that a goal, and I can tell you that is absolutely true. I go to other cities and I get to see other staff, but I just, for the citizens of this community, you need to know that you are served by outstanding public servants who really do truly want to make things better for you in the city of Renton. I am so grateful to have been a part of that, to have helped in any way that I could to make that happen. I thank this council. I am looking forward to my next adventure in a windy but a little sunnier place where I'll be doing some part-time farming and finishing out the honey-do list that my wife has had. She retired three years ago, she's had three years to create that for me, so it's going to take me some years to get through that, but anyway, Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you all. Thanks to the former council members and former mayor who are here to just take a minute. I, I'm getting sloppy, so I'll quit. I just, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the proclamation to be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Witchy, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Any opposition? Okay, it passes.
I didn't realize I was speaking in favor of the proclamation.[977.44][977.44](laughter) Glad I campaigned for it.[981.00][981.00](laughter).
It could have gone either way, Jay, you know. Oh, we're going to miss you, Jay, and nice proclamation to end his career here in the city, so thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington.
A couple of items, Mr. Mayor. Back to business. Wanted to just remind folks, we are still working through our Bring Your Own Bag campaign and from our solid waste utility effort to reduce plastic bag use and litter throughout the city. You're encouraged to bring reusable bags when shopping and complete an online survey. You can go to our website at rentonwa.gov/plasticbag, and you can get more information. The campaign runs through June 6th. Our Renton Police Department continues their Coffee with the Cop events. This week, they are at the Vince's Coffee at 401 Olympic Avenue on April 25th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. I encourage folks who are interested to come on down. If you've got just questions you want to ask them, if you've got an issue you want to talk to them about, they are going to be there and be happy to talk with you. And as we are beginning the summer season, this week especially, we've got some nice warm weather, people are going to be out in our parks. We want to remind you a little bit of our park rules to help you have a more enjoyable experience, you and your neighbors. So, first of all, we have a Share the Trail brochure that's available on our website, again, at rentonwa.gov. Dogs are not allowed at Kulan Memorial Beach Park or Kenny Dell Beach Park. At our other parks and trails, dogs are allowed on six-foot leashes. The Cedar River Dog Park is an off-leash park, so you can take your dog there and let them run free. Pet owners, please obey the Scoop Your Poop Law and obey the reduced speed limits and dismount zones that are posted along the Cedar River Trail. Trail etiquette for all users is included in our park rules and regulations and our Share the Trail brochure if you're interested. Obviously, in the case of suspicious behavior or in an emergency, please call 911. We do have trail rangers who patrol the Cedar River Trail and Kulan Park from May through September, and they'll act as goodwill ambassadors, answer questions for you, and they'll also assist with any trail education and unwanted activity there. And our parks maintenance staff are always available to answer questions you might have and to help you in any way they can. That, I think, is all. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thanks, Mr. Covington. Moving on to audience comments, we have one person that has signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please come to the podium, give your name, city and city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes. Reverend Bianca Davis Lovelace.
My name is Reverend Bianca Davis Lovelace, and I am a resident of Renton, Washington, and I serve as the Executive Director of REACH, Renton Ecumenical Association of Churches. I come here not only on behalf of REACH, but also on behalf of our board member Howard Mcumber, Mcumber, rather, who really wanted to be here but suffered a massive heart attack this past Thursday.
Oh, no.
Thankfully, he's recovering quite well. The staff and board members of REACH want to thank Jay for your constant support of REACH. Thank you and the city of Renton for all that you do for the most vulnerable in our community because of your support of REACH. REACH is Center of Hope and Renton Meal Coalition, over the years, you have helped many needy families to get off the streets and into a warm, safe environment. Also, because of your contributions, many people who endure homelessness and who are low-income have access to a hot meal daily that many people take for granted. Again, thank you, Jay, and Howard wanted me to give you this message personally, and the city of Renton for your generous spirit. If you ever want to check out to see what we are doing at REACH, you could check us at REACHRenton.org, or simply schedule a tour of our facilities and view what can manifest when people like Jay and the city of Renton truly care about needy families in our awesome community. Jay, you will truly, truly, truly be missed. Blessings to you on your next chapter of life.
Thank you very much. Please give our best to Howard. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, we have three items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
Seeing none, I'd like to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the consent agenda. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Corman?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pavoni?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Ms. Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. McIrvin?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Witchy?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I hate this.[1374.15][1374.15](laughter). Mr. Person?
Yep.
Uh, yeah, the Finance Committee did a little bit of work this week.
All right.
We have, I don't know, four?
Four reports. Ready?
Huh?
Ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. Finance Committee Committee Report, 2018 Carry Forward and First Quarter Budget Amendment Ordinance. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve an amendment in the 2017-2018 budget appropriations in the amount of $81,141,977, with the total amended budget to be $645,488,253 for the biennium. The committee further recommends that the ordinance regarding the ordinance be presented for first reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
As you can see, we're a big-time city, it seems like. I can remember many, many years ago, when the council, which I wasn't on, passed the hurdle of $1 million for the first time, and they thought that was a lot in value. Just a couple of the things that we paid this, in this round, and some people may have heard me earlier talk about the need on mental illness, because I'm personally convinced if we can solve that problem, we can reduce our jail population by 50%. We paid $497,367.67 last month to house prisoners at our regional jail facility. And then, you know, the small things sometimes get you, but we had to get a license for explosive for two of our police officers. It cost, the state charges $100 bucks for it. Our PSE bill was $83,332.45. And for those that are concerned on the encampments around the city, it costs us $13,963 to have several encampments that the public had brought to our attention cleaned out. With that, Mr. Mayor, I move the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Okay, the next report is regarding the hiring a senior finance analyst at Step D. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize staff to offer Mark Gordon, the senior finance analyst, grade A25 position, Step D, effective April 24th, 2018, signed by the committee chair members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Ms. Perez, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Okay, the next report is vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Accounts payable, total payment of $6,480,282.11 for vouchers 364597 through 364598, 364610 through 364905. Payroll benefit withholding vouchers 5783 through 5793, 100063 through 100064, and 364599 through 364609. Payroll, a total payment of $1,384,740.59 for payroll vouchers, which include 654 direct deposits and nine checks. That's the March 16th through 31 pay period. And then, Kidder Matthews, a total payment of $118,308.55 for vouchers 1329 and 1330, and 5620 through 5636, as signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Ms. Perez, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Okay, the final Finance Committee report is Amendment Six to the Fresh Bucks Implementation Agreement with Seattle. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the Amendment Number Six to Contract 16129 with the City of Seattle Office of Sustainability and Environment to accept additional grant funding for 2018, a net increase of $21,095.57 to fund an incentive program for shoppers using their Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program benefits. This is signed by the committee chair members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
As always, I love it when we accept money from somebody else. But this is a very important program. It's our farmer's market, it allows people to increase the amount of money they can spend on fresh vegetables. They have to be an approved product like everything else, but it just amazes us how many people need this extra little bit added to their cards. So with that, I move the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Ms. Perez, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you, Jason.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to legislation, we have three ordinances this evening.
The first ordinance is, all three are for first reading only, and the first one's the budget amendment. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending the city of Renton fiscal years 2017-2018 biennial budget as adopted by ordinance number 5824 and thereafter amended by ordinance numbers 5835, 5850, and 5864 in the amount of $81,141,977.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the ordinance to be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Okay, the next ordinance is regarding source of income discrimination. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending Chapter 632 of the Renton Municipal Code, expanding... Code, expanding fair housing regulations prohibiting property owners and property managers from discriminating against tenants or potential tenants on the basis of participation in any federal, state, or local government, private, nonprofit, or other housing assistance programs, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I may move the ordinance to be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
The final ordinance is regarding tax amendment exceptions to the city code. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, adding Section 123 to the Renton Municipal Code, allowing the city clerk to make non-substantive, substantive corrections to ordinances, and amending subsection 4880. G and section 4925 of the Renton Municipal Code, amending the review process for Title IV amendments to allow purely administrative or procedural amendments to advance directly to council, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I move that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thanks, Jason. Moving on to new business, Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Monday, April 30 is a fifth Monday, and so our council meetings, there'll be no council meetings. Then on May 7 at 5:30 p.m., in the conference intended, the committee at the whole will meet. We have three items on the agenda. One, King County One Table Presentation, the Downtown Improvement Emphasis, and Valley Racing Enforcement Emphasis. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Corman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a couple of things. The first is, I'll just identify that the Transportation Committee meeting, which would have been held May 7, has been canceled. And then I have a new item. I actually just received it tonight. Although it's an item that I'd received some emails about a week or so ago, and I'd communicated with Greg Zimmerman, but I guess I want the whole council to be aware. I just received an email from Deborah Rogers, and it has to do with a timber harvest, which is gonna go on on Cougar Mountain, that's gonna get access off of southeast May Valley Road. There's been an application with the Department of Natural Resources for the applicant to harvest 28 acres of timber, just as if it was warehouser land in the forest or something. And it's confusing. When I first heard about this, I called Mr. Zimmerman because actually, back in the '90s, I worked on, with actually several other council members that are here in this room tonight, the May Creek Basin Plan, which was an effort between the City of Renton and King County. We spent about $1 million surveying and hiring consultants to come up with a plan to try and reduce the amount of flooding in May Creek. It was just devastating properties and causing landslides. That plan, we worked on with King County, and Newcastle actually came into being during that plan. So they weren't initially part of it, but they did sign off on the plan as an interested party, as a new city. And I know that that plan, the basic element of the plan, that the community came together. We got lots of public input over years of work on this. And one of the things was that, one of the main elements was that in the sensitive areas that are sort of, you know, resource conservation areas out there, that we were going to retain like 75% tree canopies over the areas that would be developed. So, my understanding at the time was we were balancing the need to allow people to develop their property, but trying to preserve as much tree canopy and vegetation as possible to reduce runoff. So, how we get to this point in 2018 where somebody is taking 28 acres on the slope of Cougar Mountain and harvesting timber, I just don't know. It's, the site is in the city of Newcastle, so when I brought it up with Mr. Zimmerman, we both agreed that it was really on them to maybe act on the application, but that we are definitely stakeholders, because we are downstream from this. So if they leave a 28-acre clear cut on the side of Cougar Mountain, the runoff's coming into Renton. It's not going into Newcastle. So anyways, I'd like to forward the email to the administration. The one I got tonight expresses a sense of urgency, and citizens have created a website to access the information on the application. It's from Deborah Rogers, who lives in Stonegate. She says it also takes out a trail that she uses and other people use in a viewpoint. So, but she also says that comments have to be in on the application May 3, and she says that logging will start right after that. So there's very little time. So if I could just forward that to the administration.
Absolutely. And we will make contact with King County and also Newcastle to find out what's going on, and we'll get back to you as soon as we can.
Very much appreciated. Thank you so much.
Okay. Was that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pavoni?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Perez?
Thank you. The Community Service Committee, which would have been held on Monday, May 7, has been canceled.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McIrvin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just need to announce that the Planning and Development Committee, scheduled for April 26, has been canceled.
Okay. Ms. Witchy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Utilities Committee will be meeting on Thursday, April 26, at 3:30 p.m. in the council conference room. We have two items on the agenda. The first is the Kennydale Lakeline Sewer System Evaluation Condition Assessment Amendment, and the second item is emerging issues in utilities. And that is all, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, May 7, at 4:30 p.m., the Finance Committee will meet in the council conference room. There's two topics. One is the Sunset Multi-Service and Career Development Center, and two, emerging issues in financial streams, money streams.
Okay, thank you very much. What's the wish of the council?
Who we adjourn?
Second.
It's moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Pavoni, that we adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.